Fight it down.
Okay, called order the Lowell City Council Regular Meeting for August seventeenth at seven o'clock. Roll call next.
Mayor Bennett?
Yeah.
Counselor Myers?
Here.
Counselor Harris?
Here.
Counselor Scott?
Present.
Okay. We have a forum. Stand for the pledge.
I'm one of your citizens of the United States of America. I do remember all of the laws of which is stands. I'm your God. And you're all with the liberty of justice for all.
Next up is the approval of the agenda. Does anybody have anything they want to add or subtract? I've seen, are you saying? Next up is the consent agenda. Last item through the minutes for August third, special meeting came out today. Hopefully, everybody's comfortable with it. If not, we can take an out. We have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda. All second.
Yeah, okay. John makes a motion, Gail second. All those in favor of the consent agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Public comments. Mr. Collins, did you get anything from your messages sent out for people requesting to contact you for anything?
Regarding public comments?
Did you get an email from anybody or anything like that?
Not, not for any public comments, no.
Good. Anybody else have public comments? I know you're going to speak later. Uh, during, not seeing any. Uh, next up is. Council comments. And I do have a comment. After much consideration about the plans for the library and temporary city hall, I am unable to support two B or five B, but only support one B. Here's why. One B has an estimated cost of three hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. Two B adds a conference room with the cost rising by six hundred thousand dollars. Plan five B adds a conference room and a new entry, and it is one point one million dollars more than one B. Five Bs, five stagger, one point five million has less, has twenty percent less usable office space for city hall operations than the, than the cheaper one B. None of the three plans offer space for additional personnel, meaning a new city hall could be required if office staffing increase. In June, Mr. Collins applied us with a financial report from government capital with an expectation of owing one to two hundred thousand dollars for renovation. It's a giant leap from two hundred thousand to one point five million. Money from property sales could support the two hundred to five hundred thousand dollars in park renovations or be banked for items to be identified in the water and sewer master plan or a future city hall. Thank you. Any other comments? Anybody's question? Okay. Next up is staff reports. Mr. Collins?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor, city councilors, good evening. It's a little difficult for me to, to understand what the masks on coming through, so be patient with me. I'm joining you tonight because I'm headed out of state for vacation and I have an early flight in the morning. So to give a summary from my report of activities since our last regular meeting. We kicked off our water and sewer master planning projects. We held our third library work session at that meeting. You asked me to explore options to. Finance, uh, uh, option five B that the architect presented. Yesterday, uh, along those lines, I had a phone call with Business Oregon. They said that this project would qualify for a special public works program that they have. It's a, a long-term, low-interest loan program, and they sent me a interest form to fill out. And it's a way she described it, it's a pretty easy process. But she asked me to contact the USDA Rural Development first before we look at Business Oregon. Because they have a community facilities program that has grants that you can tap into. And they also have a loan program as well that might have a, a better deal for us. So she asked me to reach out to USDA, I emailed them, I haven't heard back yet. If I hear back from them while I'm out of town, I'll give them a call and talk to them. And learn some more about their program and if, if that would work for us. But like I said, the Business Oregon, if we were to fall back to that, if that's the way you want to proceed, that could be an option as well. I spoke with the Ford Family Foundation today to give them an update. They said we're fine on the timeline. I- if we want to get something this year, most likely, we would have to have an answer to them by the end of September so we could get on their October board meeting. They could possibly squeeze us in in December, but that's not preferred. Otherwise, we're looking at a February twenty twenty-two timeframe. But they said, take our time, get the information we need, and just to keep them updated. Uh, yeah, the brief update on council recruitment, the deadline that we advertised is next Thursday. So far, I've only received one application. And I think we're, we have a tentative date to review any applications at your September seventh meeting. Park renovation project tonight, we're recommending approval of the contract to. Do the cultural resources study on the East Main Street property. Our commercial real estate broker is continuing to work on that. We had a planning commission meeting where they approved the conditional use permit. We canceled the movie in the parks event and will be rescheduling that. I also approved a special event permit for a free concert that's going to be August twenty-seventh. Other notes, I attended the League of Cities Small Cities Meeting last week. They provided a legislative update on a lot of different topics, some of which don't necessarily affect us, but are good to know. And we've also had mask mandates implemented, so we have signs up in city hall that everybody needs to have their mask on. What questions do you have for me?
Anyone? Okay, thank you. Next is the police report on page seventy-two. With a few more hours and, uh, contracted for a couple, couple activities. Next up, uh, comes up under old business. Has to do with the motion to approve fresh professional consultant agreement with historical research associates. Mr. Collins, you want to speak to this? One more time?
Thank you, Mayor, this is the same scope of work from your last work session. The only difference is they wanted us to have a formal contract, so the contract is included here as well. And this is to complete the cultural resources studies that we can move forward with the grant application process for this project, Rolling Rock Park.
Any questions, Robert? We have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve a professional consultant agreement with Historical Research Associates, Inc., in an amount not to exceed ten thousand one hundred thirty-nine dollars and authorize the city administrator to sign.
I second.
Okay, motion by Tim, second by John. The motion is to approve a professional consultant agreement with Historical Research Associates Incorporated in an amount of not to exceed one thousand or ten thousand one hundred thirty-nine dollars and to authorize the city administrator to sign. Do we have further discussion or comments on this topic? Uh, hearing, not seeing any. All those in favor of motion to approve professional consultant agreement with Historical Research Associates in an amount not to exceed ten thousand one hundred thirty-nine and to authorize the city administrator to sign? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. All favor. Next, we're going to eighty-three. Okay, there's motion to approve estimated estimate eighty-three PM for Graham Landscaping. Mr. Collins, you want to speak to that?
This is one of the quotes that we presented at your last work session. This is to do some vegetation remediation on the city's vacant property below Sunridge Lane. We presented three estimates from Graham Landscape. One of them was for private residents, per a council direction, we're holding off on that and trying to get some volunteers to assist with that. The second was North Highland property. We're not recommending that we hire somebody to clean that up at this time as we're going to be putting that on the real estate market. And our real estate broker advised that it's not necessary to, to do that unless it's something that we just want to do.
Very good. Any questions, uh, comments from Mr. Collins? On that? Do we have a motion?
Wait, when, hey, Jeremy?
Okay, they have a question.
Uh, when can they start to work?
It'll be when the fire restrictions ease up and they can actually get out there and work.
So September?
September prob- probably, at the earliest.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I'll make a motion to approve estimate number eight three one zero from Graham Landscape and Design LLC in the amount not to exceed five thousand seven hundred sixty-nine dollars and eighty cents and to authorize the city administrator to sign.
I'll second it.
Okay, Gail made a motion, John seconded. Motion to approve estimate eighty-three ten from Graham Landscaping and Design LLC in the amount not to exceed five thousand seven hundred sixty-nine dollars and eighty cents and to authorize the city administrator to sign. Further questions, comments?
I, I'd just like to add, Mr. Mayor, I forgot to mention that I did budget ten thousand dollars to clean this property up. So it's, it is money in the budget, and with this estimate right now, we're not using up the full ten grand, so just want you to be aware of that.
Good enough. Thank you. Okay, all those in favor, motion to approve estimate eighty-three ten from Graham Landscape and Design LLC in the amount not to exceed five thousand seven hundred sixty-nine dollars and eighty cents and to authorize the city administrator to sign? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Do we feel like we can, um, I'm asking, I guess, raise max. Do we feel like we can use the balance, you know, it looks like we're going to have a balance of, you know, four thousand, you know, two hundred dollars essentially? The high would anticipate even though they're going to go in there and touch stuff and spray, there's probably a decent growth, you know, coming out of the spring, we could utilize those funds before we really get a handle on it. I mean, we really need to kind of get it under control so we don't keep having to spend large sums of money to go back and, and do it, so. That will be the deal with the balance for that.
Remembering after that, Jeremy?
If we could use the balance, yeah, absolutely. The, the, the work that they're going to be doing is only a part of Sunridge. So we're looking at possibly doing it in phases so we could get another quote for them to do kind of the middle portion of the property, how much that's going to be, and, and then use the balance, so a- absolutely.
We're going to put it on a maintenance or kind of program with, come in and spray from time to time, uh, as Tim was saying, so it doesn't go back down.
Yeah, part of the thing that Jeremy and I discussed, because we met him on site, was, you know, get, get us initially there, you know, whether it takes us time or the next time to get what we're looking for, and then. Um, they talked about doing possibly three treatments a year, um, and then, you know, giving us some direction. As you guys know, with the herbicide license, which is not a hard one to get, we can always have a staff member get that. But yeah, the intent is to get it cleaned up, you know, to a good level and then maintain it. Honestly, with the help of these guys, um, maybe in the beginning, and then staff would take it back and help.
Yeah, once we get her down, once we get her down, and our staff gets.
Yep.
A license.
Yep.
Well, we go with me and then.
Yep. Yeah. I can get the. But that's the intent, yeah, is to, you know, not let it get to this point with that. Yeah, yep.
I, I appreciate the savings offered, I mean, any, any money we can save on that North Island property is money that we put in the coffers to recoup our costs for some of the other purchases, so. If it doesn't make, if it doesn't add value to do it, then that was, that's good talking, so.
Yeah, there's just some terrible things.
Yeah.
Moving ahead on, uh, page eighty-five. Motion to appoint Public Works Director Max Baker as City Administrator Pro Tempor, for the side of the new business. Mr. Collins, you want to speak to this?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I'm leaving. For a scheduled vacation tomorrow, returning the twenty-eighth of this month. This is an out-of-state trip that I had scheduled to ensure continuity of city operations in case something were to happen. I would feel better knowing that we have somebody on the ground who can attend to that. I discussed this with Max, he's willing to step up and assume those responsibilities. I'm still going to be available, I'm not going to be out, out in the wilderness or anything like that. Uh, I'm still going to be checking my email and phone call. But I would just feel better knowing that there's somebody in the office who can take care of anything that might come up. Uh, he's willing and able to step up and take those responsibilities, and I'm recommending that we appoint him, the city council appoint him as acting city administrator during my absence.
Any questions?
Be good with that, Max.
Be good with that. Yeah. Sure.
Okay, do we have a motion?
I make a motion to appoint Public Works Director Max Baker as the City Administrator Pro Tempor. During the City Administrator's temporary absence from the State of Oregon due to scheduled vacation. Through the chapter seven of the City of Lowell Charter.
I'll second it.
Okay, John makes a motion, Tim second. Motion to appoint Public Works Director Max Baker as City Administrator Pro Tempor. During the City Administrator's temporary absence from the State of Oregon due to scheduled vacation preserved for chapter seven of the City of Lowell Charter. Other questions, questions? There's no pay increase, by the way.
No pay increase. We're going to dock.
Yeah.
You're not doing, you're a trouble dog. John, you're seeing any? All those in favor, motion to appoint Public Works Director Max Baker as City Administrator Pro Tempor during the City Administrator's temporary absence from the State of Oregon due to scheduled vacation preserved for chapter seven of the City of Lowell Charter, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Next on the next page. Considering the application of Michael Galvin for Planning Commission. Mr. Collins?
I advertised for the vacancies for the Planning Commission. Mr. Galvin's came to the office, talked to me, said he was interested, filled out an application, and I have it here for your review. If you so choose, you could appoint him tonight to the Planning Commission, and we currently have two vacancies, so this would just mean that we have one vacancy left to fill. He, he does not live in the city, but he does live within the Lowell Rural Fire Protection District. Per city code, we can have one commissioner who lives out of the city but with, within the fire district, so he would fill that slot. Because we currently don't have somebody who is out of city.
Any questions? By anybody? Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to appoint Michael J. Galvin to the City of Lowell.
I'll second it.
Gail made a motion, John seconded. A motion to appoint Michael J. Galvin to the City of Lowell Planning Commission. Do you have any other further questions, comments about?
I think Mike will be a valuable member to it, I think his experience and his, uh, intelligence consideration may be invaluable asset in the planning commission.
All those in favor of motion to appoint Michael J. Galvin to the City of Lowell Planning Commission? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We should do a good job. Next up, yeah. Consider of, uh, consideration of exclusive authorization, authorization to sell Eight Island Street. Mr. Collins?
The city council has expressed an interest in selling the city's vacant property at Eight. Currently working with Campbell Commercial Real Estate to sell the East Main Street property. I've spoken with our broker, Suzanne Kinsley. She has said that she would be willing to work with us on selling this property as well. So I've included another listing agreement so that she can get working on selling the North Highland property.
Any questions? Comments? For Mr. Collins? Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve an exclusive authorization of sale agreement with Campbell Commercial Real Estate for the sale of Eight North Island Street and to authorize the city administrator to sign.
I'll second it.
Gail made the motion, and Gail seconded. A motion to approve exclusive authorization of sale agreement with Campbell Commercial Real Estate for the sale of Eight North Island Street and to authorize the city administrators to sign. Questions or comments?
Yes. It's a clerical, uh, important, but, uh, Eight North Island Lane.
Eight North Island Lane.
Is it? Instead of for this one? Yeah. Okay. I don't know if that matters, just in case. Okay, two times, it doesn't matter. Okay.
Let's just amend that one to Eight Island, ninety, Street, is what it is. I'll pick up, pick up on that. Okay, further questions, comments? All those in favor of motion to approve exclusive authorization of sale agreement with Campbell Commercial Real Estate for the sale of. Eight North Island Lane and to authorize the city administrator to sign, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Just have it. Okay, that closes out the new business. Under other business, we are looking forward to our presentation about our park project from Paul O'Regan.
Uh, my name's Paul O'Regan, I live at sixty-two East Third. I'll see you soon, Jeremy. When you face this way. I'm here tonight to talk about the parks. I understand. How Rolling Rock Park is a priority because it is going to be the center of downtown. However, Paul Fisher Park is the family park. And if you have ever driven by, you can see how the families bring their kids in, play on playground. Uh, guys throwing football around, baseball, whatever. And the park gets used quite a bit. Uh, I've been here twenty-six years staring at Paul Fisher Park. Yeah, so I have a pretty good idea of what's going on. We have talked. And talked. Well, let me back up. Several years ago, we, uh, sent a survey out to the community. And their two biggest complaints about Paul Fisher Park was the lack of green grass during the summer. And absolutely no shade trees. Over here on, on the master plan, which. Well, to me, it's kind of a pipe dream at over a million, uh, half a million dollars to complete the whole master plan. And, uh, I don't think that's going to happen for quite a while. So I'm proposing. That. Number one. The councilors and the park committee get together and meet on a Saturday morning, not too early, please. At Paul Fisher Park. And kind of do a walkthrough and see what little projects we can do to improve the park without busting the park budget. Yeah, I have nine, I have a few ideas, but, uh, that comes if we. Appreciate. Uh, I've been told that, well, we can't plant trees because we don't have any irrigation. Well, now we got the irrigation. Well, we can't plant trees because. We need to regrade the park. Well, I disagree with that. Um, the plan calls for, uh, four inches of dirt being scraped off, twelve inches being placed back on. You already have trees in the park. So you, you're going to regrade, you're going to regrade around those trees. So my point is. That, that statement isn't very valid. And I don't believe we need to be scraping four inches off, what I believe is, in the twenty-six years I've been here, I've never seen those lawns renovated. I'm proposing that we, uh, get the contractor in and. See if maybe the proper way would be to maybe patch it, aerate it. Reseed it and fertilize it. Now, let's sit back and see what happens. Now, if we can't afford to do the whole park all at once, we can do it by section. One year, we'll do this section, next year, do the next section. Uh, so I think that kind of takes care of that, uh. But, like I said, we've been talking for a long time about shade trees, it's time to stop talking. We've got to start doing. And my proposal is this. To kick it off, I am willing to buy a memorial shade tree. In accordance with the landscape architect as to what type and what location to plant the tree. I will pay for the tree, I will pay to have the plaque made, I will pay for the planting and, and the placement of the plaque below the tree. And if necessary, I'll pay for water beds. So, there's no excuse. And, uh, it's going to take a while, even after we do get it planted. For it to take effect, I know this. But, like I said, we've been discussing this for a very long time, and we have to get it done. I'm thinking that if the community sees that the city cares enough to make improvements on the parks. They might be a little more apt to volunteer work. Because my attitude is. My thought was. If the city doesn't care, why should I care? So let's get proactive on this and start making some improvement in the family park, the Paul Fisher Park. And, uh, I don't think that, uh. It's going to cost all that kind of. Bunches of money if we do it. Pick out these little projects, there's a need to get done. And, uh, right off of that, I know, well, I've been looking at it, so I know what they've begun. And so hopefully, we can just stop talking and start doing. And, and that's why I'm here tonight because I, I want to, I want to start getting this stuff done. So, thank you for your time. And, uh. Thanks for having me.
Well, I'm going to agree with you. I don't think we should let grades, especially a grade difference that we're talking about, the eight inches finish grade difference between, even if we do go for the four up and or four down and twelve up. There's no reason with laser technology and stuff that we can't set some grade stakes in the park and the planting locations and at least identify those. And I'm, I'm going to, the best day to plant a tree was yesterday. So, you know, we've already put it off for twenty-six years. I mean, or however long we've been saying we're going to plant them. We've already lost that growth, you know? I think all of us would like to see, you know, everybody that plants a tree in their life would like to see it get large, you know, in their lifetimes.
I would.
Yeah. And, and so I, I, I think that your, your words are ring true that, you know, there's, there's no reason to hesitate in least locating and doing some grading to find where these trees will go. We can't do that as head, head in operation with the rest of it. There's no reason to wait until everything else is done to go under plant the trees because it's really the thing that has to have the time to do its thing. Everything else can be done in a short order when you're talking about, you know, all the other projects are on the master plan. It's the trees that is the factor that has to have time into it to get it to a point where they actually have off the shade.
And I would like to see it done. I, I understand, I don't know if I'm really right, but I understand the best time for planting this is early fall.
Yeah, yeah.
And that's just right around the corner. So if we're going to do this, we need to start.
Well, I think, I think the other thing, Paul, is, is scale too. I mean, it's like, you, you know, do you spend a hundred dollars on a, on a six foot tall maple tree with a four, you know, a three inch diameter? Or do you spend, you know, a thousand dollars and have them bring in a fifty foot maple tree that's already a ten inch diameter and use one of those machines that actually, you know, plants them large scale trees? And, and maybe that might be the route that we look at budgeting to kind of catch up some of the gap parts. And I realize that you're proposing purchasing one yourself, which maybe there's, you know, that's possibly hidden for you, but I would pick for the city that it'd be, it'd be advisable to try to get a couple larger trees and we could get in there and really get a head start on the lost time and get some shade back in there. As soon as they cut the tree out that was over there by the, by the playground, that was, you know, that was the upper shade in the park, so.
And I'm willing to cost them. The first tree. Not all seventeen.
Well, I think, I think also. I, I think your example is that, you know, purchasing a memorial plaque to do the memorial tree might set, you know, Mike might get some other people interested doing the same thing. I actually had somebody approach me about a young man that's recently deceased in our community. About, you know, going to the basketball court is going to be set up there. We do something there to memorialize people and I would have some interest in that myself as well, in the basketball court part of it. So I, I think that kind of, that kind of route is, is a good route to go to get other people involved and active and maybe donating and being involved in it.
Yeah, I know in the past we talked about trying to implement a buy a tree or buy a bench program, but it's never that's as far as it's gone.
I believe we have one person on Zoom that wants to speak to this. Go ahead.
So hello, my name is Patty Jo Angelini, and I am here in support of what Hall has been saying. As many of you know, I have been talking for, gosh, five years about trees. And before I came in the council, I submitted a proposal about allowing the, having the community be able to purchase a tree for, you know, in memory, celebration of a birth, whatever, and it went nowhere. And so it's been a very frustrating time, long time. And I want to really support Hall's comment that we don't have to, that our community can do things. We don't need to wait for big grants to come. That does not mean we don't care about Rolling Rock Park. I care tremendously about Rolling Rock Park, but we can begin doing a few things at Paul Fisher now. And I wanted to just let you know how much I support Hall and his efforts and his request to the city.
Anything, anything else from the, yes?
What is, what is the tree cost? I mean, ten throughout?
Wow.
Wide range of numbers.
No, no, I, I got a cost of two hundred and fifty dollars for a tree. I don't know how large the tree is. And I don't really care because, like I said, if it's a fifty footer, I don't care. I'll buy it. But yeah, the, the initial cost to shade trees, two hundred and fifty dollars.
Anything else?
So what can we do to kind of kick ourselves off? We all mentioned maybe getting together on a Saturday at the park.
I would like that.
And maybe we should commit to coming up with a date and doing that and then going from there because we could, you know, I don't know what money we have to work with right now at the city or Paul Fisher, or if we have any. Sure, but we could also put together a program or start talking about a program to encourage people, you know, to see if people would buy a tree. We, we raised some money for the, for the libraries. So, you know, we may find that people would be willing to buy a tree.
If we do meet on a Saturday, I would like to have the last few of us to involve in this meeting.
Did you hear that, Jeremy?
I did. Did, did you decide on a date to do this?
Maybe we should reach out to the lands- landscape architect. Paul was mentioning having him there, so maybe we could reach out to him and find out if he might be available when, and then we can get ahold of everybody and figure out.
There you go, Max. Worst assignment for tomorrow. Pro tempore work.
I just don't want to leave it sitting because I'm afraid we'll do the same thing just because we get busy and forget. So let's try.
I think raising, sorry, Gil.
No, it's fine.
I think raising money in Lowell is very easy. We, before we have the crow's nest, we had, I don't know what you want to call it, a means to out of two by, out of four by eight. It took me two weeks, maybe three weeks, I raised forty-eight hundred dollars by just telling, selling yard lines and designating the yard lines to people for the season. And that was enough money for us to pay for that crow's nest to be finished. So I think that the community here, if you get on it, they're going to be excited about it. Even if somebody can only contribute five bucks or twenty dollars or whatever to help support putting trees in that park, which I agree, I live right across the street from Hall, and it would be nice to see some shade over there.
Well, I just think we need to make some kind of move where we're actually doing something. So, so you going to do that, Max?
Max, I, Max, I just forwarded you David Doherty's email address. If you want to reach out to him and inquire as to his availability over the next few weeks.
Yep, I will check his availability and for a Saturday morning, is there been?
Yeah.
Before we do that, before we just start walking around and everybody pointing and we all agreeing, I think, I think what we really need to do in basic, we need to find out what's in the budget. So I think Mr. Cottle and the Parks Chairman need to sit down, see what they're talking about in phase one. They can do it with Max, but I think that they need to, you know, you can go out there and say, I think we need forty trees. And then I want to say, I think we need forty trees too. We're going to say, how much is in the budget? Five hundred dollars. Okay, that's less than forty then. So, so I think what needs to happen first is Mr. Cottle, Parks Committee Chairman, supported by Max, need to sit down, what's in the budget, what, what they're wanting to do, what we can do. And then they can get Graham involved, bring it back to the council at that point for us to agree, support, disagree, control rhythm, because really nothing's going to happen until the council finally makes that agreement. And for us to wait for whoever to come back and everything, go out there and do it. I don't, I don't, for me to walk around that park, I, I can agree with everything you say out there. And, and I, and I'm not shutting you down on your idea on that. I think it's a good idea. I think that we should have put the trees in probably two or three, four years ago. It was asked that we do it then, and I think we should have done it. But I think that we need to have a plan of what we're doing, what we're looking at. If we want to go out there after the city administrator, the parks director, after they both decide on what we're going to, we're going to put this over here, we've got money to do this, this and this, then I think that it's time for us to go out there. If we want to go out there and look at it, we can. Or if we can just take action in a council meeting, we can and then get it done. It's like the, the hillside over there at, under where I live. You know, we didn't have to go out there and look at that, you know, look at all the blackberry vines and stuff like that. We could make a decision without it. So I think that I think the quickest, most direct way of doing it is like I say, the three of them get together, they decide on what we have money for, what needs to be done, what they want, what the parks want done, and then bring it back to us and we can get it done. The main, main thing is, we probably want to do the trees in the wintertime when it's, whenever, we don't have to water them as much with the ground soft and everything and cut them in so they grow. You don't want to do it next summer or whatever, but somewhere, whenever it starts raining in October, we possibly be able to put them in there. I don't know what that's, but I, I don't see it as being a, a long, shouldn't, it shouldn't be a long process where we meet, meet, meet and then come out the other end.
I also think coincidentally with that, I think we need to explore this avenue of fundraising and memorialization of trees to get community involved with it. You know, we have the one budgetary stream of what the city can do, but then another effort to, to, because I doubt we're going to come up with enough budget to do everything we need for this. So supplementary, you know, develop some kind of message to the community and a program for this with standards of, of the memorialization plaque. If we want to go that route or somebody just wants to donate a tree, but get, get some kind of literature wrote up, some kind of verbiage to distribute to the.
I agree. We can put that in the bridge or the, the water deals, but until we know, you know, we could be asking for twenty-five dollars to finish up everything that he wants to do, or we could be asking for twenty-five thousand dollars, you know, until we, until they all decide on what they want to do, what step they want to do in phase one, then, but I agree. Whatever it is, we should put it in the bridge, we should put it out, put it on the website that we're looking for people to donate that money for trees. Decide on how many trees it is. How many trees do we want? You know, twenty trees?
Well, well, that was in my mind, one of the reasons for me to go out there and walk around and see.
That's right.
Well, it's in the plan where the trees are going to be.
Where they were intended to go. And then we can say, well, you know, in the end, we know what we've got to work with and we pick, we're going to start here or we're going to do a couple here, a couple here, a couple here, a starting spot, whatever.
Yeah, we can do it.
I, I need to go out there myself and see.
Yeah. It's in, it's in the plan, in the master plan. You can go out there and look at it and go. So I don't, I don't know. I'll let Mr. Cottle and Mr. O'Regan, O'Regan to set up a date and and a, a, an agenda going forward on this and we can go from there.
So are you saying you don't want to meet on a Saturday?
We can meet on a Saturday if the council decides to meet on a Saturday.
My idea was to meet and walk through the park. I don't know. How many of you actually walked through Paul Fisher?
Well. I'm just very visual. It's just.
Well, I am too.
It helps me. And, and like I said, we, we know we're not going to do the whole thing at once, but we, by looking at it, we can say, where do we want to start?
Paul, can you hand me the picture?
We do need to know the finances. There's no doubt about that.
Walk through the park, usually about three out of the five Saturdays I'm busy, so.
I think this is the bond.
It's okay.
Yeah. We kind of already know.
Right, but I guess.
Account in where they're going and if they're ever going to Paul Fisher Park.
And that costs seventeen shade trees.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
But, but I will say, I will say this. The city is discussing what we're going to do with this end of the park.
I know.
So we may end up with, you know, in that, we one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve or so trees. So we're not saying we could not anymore.
Ten's a good place to start.
Yeah, we need to keep that in mind while we're at it.
And that's what the mayor's saying is we really do already kind of know where we propose where we're laying.
That's what the plan was.
Effect to have trees.
Yeah.
To still leave.
So we know that we're going to need trees. We know where we want the trees. So what we're, and so what we're doing, we, we need to decide how much money we have, how many trees we can do and go from there.
May I have one suggestion? For the school on Arbor Day or Day, whatever it's called these days.
Or both.
Or both. But they do, they do work. And so maybe we could have something, we could have a class, don't need a tree.
That's usually in the spring.
Okay, well, we want to do it before then.
It's.
April.
March, April.
Yeah.
Well, I'm sure that if we approach the class, they're willing to work outside of those, you know, parameters. I mean.
The so-called day.
Yeah.
And this is not set in stone.
No, it's right. It's not.
But it was the guideline that we, it's the guideline we use where the area we wanted trees. If we, if Public Works has a paint that they can paint on the grass without killing the grass, they can go out there and, and spray where the trees would be to give us an idea of something like that where they go. And then, or else floods or something like that. Because otherwise, you know, I've walked around a lot of fields and a lot of grasses and stuff like that. I, I want it to be protective when we go out there. And if, like I say, if we, I, I, I can approve it from here and have it done as well as like go out there, then come back later and approve it. So I'm not going to just, I don't see myself disapproving. I'm, I'm going to approve what we have the money to do.
Cottonwoods are cheap.
Oh, God.
Oh. You're not even funny.
Yeah, we get a rule of blackberry vines.
I think that was one of the trees that was in there, I guess it was.
So we've got a lot of ideas going here. Why don't we do this? I'll, I'll, I'll get with Paul. Sometime I give Paul this week to do like a real rough, just walk through a pretty short park. I can get budget numbers while Jeremy's on it. Super easy. Get some rough ideas, you know, I, I know what Paul's had in mind, but to see it along with them. And then we can take it from there. We can plan stuff. Nobody asks me personally. We can shoot email and stuff.
And when you do.
Kind of see what, what he's efficient and what people are. And then if we, if necessary to have a Saturday meetings, maybe we're proposing something different. We can always plan for that. You know, Jeremy, I'd like Jeremy to be there and have to deal with that. Yeah, we can do that. See what's available on the budget, you know, take consideration the donations. And see if we can get them.
Or we can do it, have a six o'clock start out there. That's our work session, work session over there. Walk through it from over here and then we have activities. Yeah, let's go.
Are going to do it during the week or something. Give me a call, Max. If I'm not, got some meeting or something, welcome to it.
Okay, okay. Are you good with that, Jeremy?
Yeah, that sounds like a solid plan.
We're with you, Paul.
All right. Call, call around some nur- some nurseries and see what kind of trees they have and get some, some price quotes and see what kind of species they are and all that good stuff.
Whoever put in the trees for the school, whatever they did the renovation, they were on our side. So they, tell them what is for, maybe they will I would lean towards them to start with, the camp or if you know, as a comparison price to work off of. They did a lot for the school, so, and for the camp, so.
I feel like we need to really get moving on this because that's my understanding, the best time to plant a tree is early fall.
And so that's why we need to.
Yeah, that's what we're saying. That's the reason.
So we can at least get something started, even if it's a couple trees.
Or a tree.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Okay, Paul, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Oh, you're welcome. Any other comments? Okay, we'll be adjourning here shortly and be going into expected accession. It'll be closed to the public. If anybody has anything else to say before we shut down, rolls up. Eight o'clock. We're adjourned at seven fifty.
Mr. Mayor, I went around the park, realized I left my phone and my keys out in my truck.
So I stopped here for a minute and restarted for the next meeting. Say one more time, I stopped this for a minute.
Hi.
Yeah, next time.